Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, October 22nd, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Okay. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 9th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 9th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 9th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, and most of all, welcome. Thank you for filling in for Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Present.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Martins?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente is excused. Mr. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here. Thank you.
Can we all stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Troply, you might swear in the professionals, please. Thank you, Mr. Trump. Any minutes? Any minutes, Caitlin?
Uh, no. No.
Vouchers?
No.
Correspondence?
No.
Resolutions?
No.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward. Application before the Board, case number BA-18-06, L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc., used variance, preliminary and final major site plan. Application of L&amp;L Paving, Inc., as applicant in One Greenway LLC, Two Greenway LLC, as owner seeking a used variance, preliminary and final major site plan. Approval to develop the property as a bituminous concrete manufacturing facility with improvements consisting of the removal of portion of the existing concrete manufacturing facility, rehabilitating the existing storage building, construction of quality control building, weight stations, and installation of an office trailer near the existing office, the removal and replacement of approximately 13 acres of impervious coverage with landscaping, and a total of 250 trees, and the installation of other associated improvements on premises known as Block 177, Lot 62.01, formerly Lot 62 and 6489 Yellowbrook Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard May 7th, 2018, when it was carried to June 25th, 2018, with no further notice. After some discussion on jurisdiction and the recycling aspects of the application, the Board took jurisdiction on June 25th, 2018, and then this application was carried to July 9th, 2018, with new notice. After some additional testimony, July 9th, 2018, the application was carried to August 27th, 2018, with no further notice. After the application put additional testimony on the record on August 27th, 2018, the application was carried to October 22nd, 2018, with no further notice. Welcome, Mr. Butler.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you for having us back tonight.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gazirowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before I start into our presentation tonight, I just wanted to do three quick items of cleanup. At the last hearing, there was a question from Mr. Mallon regarding whether the Fire Bureau had any comments regarding the internal, the width of the internal roadways on the property. They're 25 feet rather than 30 feet. We did seek that, some sort of comment from the Fire Bureau. They did issue a comment that they have no issues, they have no problems or concerns regarding the proposed width of the internal roadways at 25 feet. That is included as Exhibit B-13. It's an email from Chief Lewis of the Fire Bureau dated September 5th, 2018. The second item of cleanup, there was also some discussion at the last hearing regarding, Mr. Mallon had some questions concerning the stormwater management on the northeast part of the property. And at that time, Mr. Kennedy, our engineer, had said that he would work with Mr. Mallon in order to come up with a plan that was, Mr. Mallon was comfortable with. Mr. Mallon and Mr. Kennedy have communicated since the last hearing, and a plan was, an alternate plan was presented. Mr. Mallon, I'll let him speak for himself, but was happy with that plan, saying that it could be tweaked a little bit more during the application process, but it's a good, it's a good start to address the concerns that he had.
Mr. Mallon?
Yeah, the, yes, Mr. Kennedy submitted me a sketch showing the concept plan. We have to work some of the details out of elevations, but they have, basically behind the berm areas that they had along Yellowbrook Road, he has created a swell area and a, I guess you could say, sort of a detention area to hold some of the water, give it a chance to percolate into the ground, get some water quality that it runs off of the paved areas. And so, he has given me a concept plan that's acceptable for the drainage.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And the last item is, there was also some discussion at the last hearing concerning the property to the north of my client's property, which is 69 Yellowbrook Road. My client owns that property. It's currently used as a residential property. There was a suggestion at the last meeting that my clients retired that property from being used as a residential property, so that there are no noise issues concerning that property. I've spoken to my client. They are fine with retiring that property as a residential property. However, the timing, we need to work on the timing of when that retirement actually happens. My suggestion would be when, because we want, you want, when you're doing something like this, it's always an enforcement thought, you want to have something that's a clear date. So, my suggestion would be on the date of a issuance of a certificate of occupancy, plus a little bit of time. So, I'm saying plus a little bit of time because right now, there's a tenant in that property. Tenant, tenancy laws in New Jersey are very specific and very strict. I have no idea when a CO will be issued for this property. If my client had their wish, their Christmas wish to come true would be December 25th, but I don't know if that's going to happen. It may happen at some point in the future. There needs to be a little bit of leeway from when the certificate of occupancy is issued, so that the proper notices can be given to whatever tenant is in that property to vacate.
Well, Mr. Troply, if they have a legal tenant lease on the property, it wouldn't be until that lease would be up, correct?
Landlord-tenant law in the state of New Jersey is a very interesting body. That landlord-tenant law permits the lease to continue on almost into perpetuity until certain events happen. There may be a way for the tenancy to be broken, and it's very, it's very specific. It can be done, but it doesn't necessarily mean at the end of the lease that the tenant must leave. There can be additional terms put in, in a general lease that are changed, but in this particular case, there may be a way to do it, but again, that's something that I haven't seen the lease. I don't believe it's been presented as an exhibit, so I'm really not prepared to completely respond to your question, except to say that there may be a way, and there probably is, but it would have to be an exception to the general principle that the tendencies continue, almost, almost as if it were a life estate. And I don't think anyone here would disagree with me.
No, and that's why I was asking for that additional time to be put onto the end, be it, be it a year, so that that lease can, can terminate, and we can, we can, my client can get the proper notices to the tenant, because you don't want to, the last thing you want to do as a landlord is have to throw somebody out. So, you want, we want to make sure we're giving the proper, proper notices to the tenant, and I would suggest at least a year from the CO to allow that to happen, because once again, I don't know when the CO will issue.
When's the lease up?
I don't know, at the moment.
Your client has no idea when the lease is up?
Um, I'm sure that my client has, has, when the lease is up, but as I sit here, I don't.
Michael, just for the clarity of the record, can you produce the lease perhaps by next Monday? Because, you know, we're basically, we're just shooting blanks right now. We could take a look at it, or you could send it to me, you know, ahead of time, and we can have a conversation.
And the only thing that I ask, I will produce the lease, but I ask that I can, it's going to be a redacted version of the lease, to take the names and any other, any other.
But also, Mr. Troply, you know, he might not get a CO for, for a year. So, you know, whenever the lease is up, it's possible that they would renew the lease. So...
Again, Mr. Chairman, there's ways to turn a, again, we don't know what the term of the lease is. We don't know if it's month-to-month, year-to-year, or what it is. If it's year-to-year, well, that's one thing, it can be turned into a month-to-month lease with certain notice provisions. But again, I'm going to reserve comment until I actually see the, the redacted lease, and I can, you know, report back to the Board.
But I think the issue really here is the noise issue. So, the, what they're trying to accomplish is to say that they would abandon the residential use upon a certain period of time after the issuance of a CO. So, I think that needs to be nailed down a little bit clearer, because, you know, when we spoke, we talked about abandoning the use when you got a CO. Now, it's, we're going to abandon it a year after we get a CO. And now, it's maybe we'll be able to do it, depending on the terms of the lease. I do think that that needs to be nailed down, because the issue is that the residential use immediately adjacent is a sensitive receptor, and therefore would cause a problem with compliance with the noise, the noise requirements. So, I think, I agree that the use being abandoned at some point after the issuance of a CO would resolve that issue, but I do think we need to nail it down a little bit firmer, because right now, I, you know, it just seems very wishy-washies. But I, I'm okay with waiting till, you're coming back next week, right? So, we can, we can firm that up next week, but I do think that it needs to be firmed up a little bit more before we can move forward with that issue, because it is based, it's a noise issue. It's not really just that use issue, it's how it's going to affect the noise compliance.
Okay.
Correct, and that, that's why I'm proposing, you know, a start date of the issuance of the CO, then the issue once, again, becomes, you know, proper notice to the tenant, and whether we can get, get tenant out of the lease, which we can provide a copy at least, if we can continue this conversation at the next hearing.
Okay.
All right. First thing we're going to do tonight is, I brought Mr. Croissant back. He is our noise expert. I think the Board may have had some, some questions for him. If they did, I brought him back, also brought him back to talk about some testimony, some, some studies that he had performed subsequent to the last hearing.
Also, Mr. Butler, may I ask, is the asphalt manufacturer representative going to be present?
Yes, tonight, I also have Catherine Sutton shout, show, show, from Aztec, who is available. She will continue her testimony that she began on July 9th.
Right.
Finish that testimony, be available for any questions of the Board, questions of the public, and a cross-examination.
Right. Mr. Chair, you remember, we made that representation the last time.
Are we going to have enough time?
Right.
To move through both?
Yes.
Okay.
In that way, that witness will be finished and will not be recalled, to my knowledge.
Correct, that's.
Correct. That way, we don't have to drag her back up to Old New Jersey for another meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Croissant, I will remind you, you're still under oath from the last time that you provided testimony?
Yes.
Okay. Quickly, from the last hearing, there was some discussion at the end of the last hearing, at the end of your testimony regarding Howell Township's new ordinance was, which was adopted in October of 2017. Do you remember that, that discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Leaving aside whether that, the legal argument as to whether that, that ordinance is applicable to this application or not, the proposed use, does it comply with the most current version of the Howell Township code concerning noise regulation?
It does.
Okay. And you've reviewed that code?
I have.
Okay. Now, you also, there was some question last time at the Board, towards the end of the last hearing regarding the level of noise coming from the L&amp;L property to the property on Yellowbrook Road designated as 69 Yellowbrook Road. Do you remember that discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Did you do any new modeling for that noise, and were there any changes to the levels of, decimal levels that were presented in the EIR report?
Yes, that during the daytime operations, the L&amp;L asphalt facility would comply at the houses on Yellowbrook Road that they own, and obviously, as well as the houses on Cranberry Road, as previously testified.
Okay. And that, that's different than what was presented originally in, in the report that you had presented.
That's correct.
And what, what was the difference between the modeling numbers that you did in the past and these modeling numbers?
Well, the original modeling numbers didn't take into effect the, the sound wall that had been added by the scales, and also, it co-mingled the sound from the recycling facility and the asphalt plant, whereas now, we're just addressing the sound from the asphalt plant.
And did you, you went out, did you go out to the property recently and do any testing of the ambient noise in the, in the area?
Yes, I did.
And what is the ambient noise in the area?
Actually, with the, all of the traffic on Yellowbrook Road, the ambient levels are, are reasonably high. I monitored the, from like 6:00 AM to 8:30 AM in the morning, and then in the, in the PM peak hour also, and found that the, at the houses on Yellowbrook Road and on Cranberry Road, that when heavy trucks passed by, the noise levels at the houses were 72 to 75 decibels. When school buses passed by, they were 66 to 68 decibels. And when medium trucks, which are two-axle, six-wheel trucks passed by, they were 66 to 67 dB. So, that on all of those pass-by events, they were higher, obviously, the, both the 50 nighttime and the 65 daytime. And then cars, depending upon their mufflers and, and speed, were 57 to 60 decibels at, at those houses.
Okay. And, and any, any noise that's being produced from the L&amp;L site, are they below these ambient, ambient levels?
Absolutely.
Would they add to the ambient levels?
Not at the levels that they are, would be generating them.
Okay. And you also, before, at the last hearing, you testified that the, the circulation for the, the operation of the plant at night, meaning after 10 o'clock, was changing as opposed to the circulation on the site during the day?
That's correct.
And what, what's the change?
Well, the, there would be no incoming trucking or, or exiting trucking at the, at the main entrance that's opposite Cranberry Road. All of the trucks would use the northerly entrance at the, at the north end of the site. And that, that would take the trucks further away from the houses on Cranberry Road and enable them to meet the nighttime standard of 50 dB.
Okay, so with the, the change to the internal circulation in the property, that allows the, the operation of the plant to be below the 50 decibel level?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Butler?
Yeah.
Real quick, the nighttime ambient noise, did you record that level?
Yes.
Existing ambient?
Yes.
Do you, do you have those numbers?
It was, it was in the, in the 40s when, when I was out there.
Was there trucks running at night while you were there?
Well, actually, let me, let me take that back. There were occasions that I was out there that it was in the 50s when the cicadas were active. So, the cicadas had it into the low 50s when I monitored the, the noise levels, and when the cicadas were not active, it was in the 40s.
Okay. Was, was there any truck activity that night, or those nights?
Those values that I'm reporting to you were without truck activity. There were trucks out there, and they were louder, and they were in the range that I had previously just mentioned.
So, they, they'd be 72 to 75 with, running?
Right.
At, at night?
Yes.
I mean, did you measure that?
Yes, I did.
So, the, the existing ambient noise at night with trucks running is still 75, 7, you know?
When, when the trucks are passing by, yes, it is that high.
Are there existing trucks running at night sometimes?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just follow up with that?
Yes.
So, first, you tell me that the nighttime ambient noise level is 40 dB, and now, we're talking 70 to 75 dB. What is it?
Well, I think, I think what he says is that when he observed with trucks, it is higher.
I'm not going to object to the response by the chairman. I think the question was, oh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Can you, can you let your client answer that?
Sure. That the, when there was no traffic out there, it was in the 40s or the 50s if the cicadas were active. And if there was a car or a truck going by, it was in the 60s or 70s.
Do you have anything to submit to us, to show us what is going on out there? Like, did you, I mean, I just, we went through this the last time, and the issue was, is that your truck traffic was over the 50 dB at night. And while we appreciate the sensitivity to the residences on Cranberry, there is a residence immediately adjacent on Yellowbrook Road. We understand that that may or may not be abandoned. We ask for more information. Where is it?
What, I mean, I don't, I don't, what more information?
Well, I mean, Mike, come on. Is it 40, and how often is it 40? And how often does a truck go by? Is it 65 the majority of the time? Or is it 65, you know, for 15 seconds while a truck drives by, and then the rest of the time, it's 40? So, your operation is going to be a big difference versus what the trend is. I mean, I don't think that this is, this is an unusual line of questioning, considering he's a noise expert, right? So, I, I just need to get a better idea of what's going on out there, because you need to provide information to us that says there's no negative impact, and right now, I don't have the information.
No substantial negative impact.
Okay, but...
What the testimony that was provided was that when he was out on the site, when there was no trucks, it was 40 or 50 dB, depending on if there's cicadas.
So, how often, okay, well, let's just take the cicadas out of it. But how often was that, as a percentage? And what time were you out there? Because you said to me, you, you talked about 6 to 8:30 AM, and then the PM peak. So, what time was the PM peak?
5 to 6 PM. I was out there on other occasions than what I just talked about tonight. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what your question is. I mean, the meter...
My question is, you're testifying to the ambient noise level at the site. That's my question.
Right.
So, you're not giving me a picture that I can say I understand what the noise level is on a given night. You're all over the place. So, is it 40? Is it 70? What is it? And what's the frequency? You said when a truck goes by, it's 70. How often did that happen?
It depends upon the time of the night, and it depends upon whether or not Stavola was operational.
I mean, I, this is information that we need, and this should not be news to you, because this is the same conversation we had when we were here the last time. Your testimony was very narrow the last time. We were not okay with it. So, we asked for more information. So, you're here now, but the information is very vague and all over the place. So, I need to know, on average, at night?
Well, what does average mean to you?
You tell me, you're the noise expert.
I'm trying to, but you're doing all the talking.
Excuse me.
Seriously?
Sir, excuse me. Listen, what we're trying to find out, is there existing conditions at night? What are those existing conditions? Are there trucks running at night there? That, that's what we're trying, you know, is there trucks running up and down Yellowbrook Road at night? I don't care where they're going, but do they run there?
And when, when you were out, when you were out at the property at night, did you, did you notice trucks running?
Yes, I did.
Did you do any noise?
Yes, yes, I did.
On those trucks?
Yes, I did.
Do you have that in a report that reports that? You know, that's what, I know what she's asking for, and we did have this discussion in the last meeting. We know what you're proposing based on models, what your site's going to do, but what is existing on Yellowbrook Road right now? That's what I want to know.
Okay. Well, the, the meter that I use, I, it measures every tenth of a second, the noise levels, and, and, and then sums them up. So, I can report, and, and L1 is that noise level that succeeded 1% of the time, and L5 is that noise level that succeeded 5% of the time, and L10 is that noise level that succeeded 10% of the time. And then there's an LEQ, which is a log, a logarithmic average of what the noise is.
Do we have those reports?
I, no, I have not.
That's what we need.
Okay.
We do need that, those reports. And I thought that was pretty clear at our last meeting, that we were going to do further ambient noises, what's existing there now? You know, what, what's going on? From 6:00 in the morning till 6:00 in the afternoon, from 6:00 in the afternoon till 6:00 in the morning? You know, we need those numbers. If, if trucks are running up and down Yellowbrook Road at night, you're putting it to where there's no ambient noise, and then you're going to be producing this noise that, that's going to be above what, what the ordinance is saying at night.
Well, the, it's not what, no, so...
That's what the testimony is.
The testimony is, is that the, the noise on the road from a truck is 72 to, depending on the type of truck, 67 to 72.
But, but your client...
But it's on, but it's on, but it's on, it's on, it's on the road, where there is no regulation concerning the, the amount of noise on the road. And this, if the Board has to remember, this is the SED zone where, where industrial uses with trucks are permitted. So, there is, there is a contemplation within the ordinance that there's going to be trucks, that there's going to be noise in Yellowbrook Road.
I understand, but if you're not going, if you're not going to exceed what's existing on your site, we need to know that.
We are, that, that's what, that's what Mr. Croissant testified to. We are not exceeding...
No, Mike, he did not testify that.
No, he did.
He said, on average, it's 40 dB.
40 to 50.
That's lower than you said your site was going to do.
The question was, are we going to comply with the noise ordinance?
Yeah.
And we are going to comply with the noise ordinance with the, with the change of the internal circulation at night.
Only from Cranberry Road. That's only going to affect the, the homes on Cranberry Road.
The other, the other, the other, the other thing it's going to affect is that, is the house on, is the property on Yellowbrook Road, is 69 Yellowbrook Road, which my client is going to abandon as a sensitive receptor, is no longer will be a residential use. So, that 50 dB goes out the door.
Okay.
And once again, my client will comply with the, with the Howell and the state noise codes when, when it operates.
Because if it goes over, if, if your site produces more than the ordinance, what, what you're saying, regardless of what is existing there now, and I'm talking roadway noise, because that's what we need to know. We need to know what the ambience, what's going on there? What's going on on other sites at 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night? What their DBAs are producing? What's existing throughout the area? That's what we need to know.
And what, and what my, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is that there is a noise code for Howell Township in the state of New Jersey that deals with noises coming from a property. At, at evening, which is, starts at 10 o'clock, my client will comply with the noise code. So, that the, the, the levels coming off of the property, at any sense of the receptor will be below 50 dB.
Right. So, you're, you're going to tell me that if, maybe not one of your client's trucks brings millings into the site, they know not to slam their tailgates?
Yes.
Okay, I, I agree to that. But what happens? You got a contract hauler come in, drops a load, bang, there goes the noise.
Once, and we, and we dealt with that through Mr., Mr. Redielli's testimony is that, that, that's good, that whole, the noise, the, the banging of the tail, the tailgate, that will all be policed and monitored on site. They get one warning and they didn't, and they don't do it again. The backup, backup beeps are taken off of all of the, all of the contractors at night. They're only using the strobes. So, Mr. Redielli and, and my client are working and, they're, they're saying that they are going to do everything that they can to keep this property within compliance and that they can do it if the internal roadway circulation is the way that, that they're proposing. And the restrictions that they're, they're going to place on the, on themselves and on the contractors who come in, they will police those, those restrictions and they will make sure that they're complied with so that the property operates at the 50 decibel level or, or less at night.
So, yes, or Mr. Gazarovski?
Now, make a, a brief comment. I, I have a little bit different take on this issue of noise. And I'm well aware of what the standards are for noise, both in the early hours of the day as well as later in the evening. And I'm aware of the argument of Mr. Butler, that so long as a vehicle or whatever it may be is on a public road, that it's unrestricted noise. But this applicant is here for a use variance and he has to satisfy both a positive and a negative criteria.
Okay. I'm, I don't want Mr. Gazarovski to sum up on, on someone's testimony.
You'll be able to put your witness on at that time?
Thank you.
Okay. So, Jennifer?
Yes.
What do you need?
I would like a report. Because to be perfectly honest, I have absolutely no idea what the noise is.
Okay. What report do you want?
I want an analysis, a noise report. He should know how to-
24 hour, a 24 hour report.
I mean, I don't, he can use the data he has already, but he needs to put it in a report, sign his name on it, and submit it to the board as evidence of what the noise impacts are going to be.
Okay. Mr. Butler?
You have any issue putting together a report?
Uh, no, I, I'm happy to put together a report. I'd like to either meet with you or have a conversation on the phone to make sure that the report that I give is what you're looking for.
Okay.
Because I've done hundreds of noise reports and the scopes are all a little bit different. And I, despite your, you know, I want to, I want to give you the information that you need, so I-
That's fine.
I want to talk to you.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. At the moment, I would propose reserving time for, yeah. Good.
John, you got to go into the mic.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
And turn it on.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Since noise decreases on a certain scale as with distance, where are you taking these noise measurements at?
I'm taking them at a fixed distance from the roadway, either 25 feet or 50 feet from the roadway. And then by calculation, adjusting the distance to the, to the house or, or other receptor.
So, you never really took the equipment to the first housing area on Cranberry or whatever?
I wa, no, I was in the yard at the house at Cranberry. I have not, no, sorry, I was at the house on Yellowbrook. I did not have permission or ask for permission to go when the house is on Cranberry.
Could be interesting to see what the noise level is, is there right in those areas during the day and at night? Because that's what we're all concerned about, so.
Well, Mr. Krasan, he will, he'll come back and he'll have a present report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And, and I think he's going to give us a report and a map of where he's taking it.
Yes.
But remember, the ordinance says at the property line. You don't have to go into the house to do this. So, you don't need permission to go into the house. You're supposed to be at the property line. So, that's what the ordinance says. That's what he's going to have to do. But you need a report to show the progression of what you've done, when you've done it, the hours, and what you're reading. And then where it is, distance apart. I mean, that's the kind of thing that we need to evaluate. And I would like a copy of the report also, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Professionals? Okay. Mr. Butler?
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Okay. Hi, my next one, this is going to be Ms., Ms. Catherine Cho. She was here at our July, at your July meeting, and she provided a wealth of testimony at that meeting about the plant and how asphalt is created through, through the plant. If you remember, we marked into the record exhibit, I think it was A25. And she went through the entire presentation in that, in that sheet, page by page, explaining what happened, what, what, what did what. And I, I'm not technical, so basically how, how this piece of machinery is, is going to work. I brought her back in case someone, anyone from the board had questions, because we had to end the, her last testimony a little bit early because it was, it was about 10 o'clock, 10:15. So, I brought her back. If people, if anyone from the board had any questions of her, also if the public had questions of her testimony, and also if Mr. Gazarovski wants to cross.
Okay. I, I would like for you to just give a brief, I, I know you know this system very well. Just give us a brief refresher on what you had testified to before, and then we'll move from there. Because my vice chair is absent tonight and he sent me a list of questions he would like to have answered. So, I, I would like to, just a brief.
All right. Well, I'm going to make this short and sweet. We're going to look just at this, this first page. So, if everybody has A25, it'll be easiest to look at this. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk us through how we make the, how we make the mix and, and what's going to go on at the plant. So, we start off on what would be the, the left-hand page, side of the page. These are the cold feed bins and these are, these are aggregate storage bins that are going to be filled with a front-end loader. A different size aggregate's going to go into each bin and each one has its own belt feeder that will be running at a different speed. So, that's how we're going to control the gradations of the mix, of the rocks that are going to go into the mix. The rocks that are, that are dropping out of the bins are going to drop onto a collecting conveyor that then goes to a transfer conveyor. Let's see this.
Perfect.
Transfer conveyor. From the transfer conveyor, they're going to go to a scalping screen. The purpose of that scalping screen is to remove any oversized material from the feed so that it doesn't actually go into the mix because that would mess with the recipe, if you will, the, the job mix formula. Any of the materials passing then through the scalping screen itself will drop onto the, the incline conveyor. That incline conveyor has the weigh bridge on it that allows us to sum how much material is actually passing to the drum at any given time. And this allows us to control the operation of the equipment. This is one of the, the devices that's being continuously monitored by our control system. Once the, the aggregates reach the double barrel, you remember that that is a drum within a drum. It's a, it's a large counterflow drum mixer. And inside of the drum, we're going to be drying and heating the aggregate, bringing it up to the temperature we need based on the type of mix that they're going to be producing. If it's a virgin mix, you'll basically bring the aggregates up to mixed temperature. Once the aggregates are dried, they drop out through holes in that inner rotating drum and they end up out in that outer mixing chamber. That's the outer shell. And here is where we will start adding in the liquid asphalt cement. We can add in the, the dust that's been recovered by the baghouse, and I'll talk about that in a second. We can also add in the recycle, if they're going to do a recycle mix, to start pre-drying it at this point. Because you've got to get all the water off, because remember asphalt is an oil product. Remember, we talked about distillation. We've got to get all the water off. So, we simply start that mixing process. Now, in this particular plant, they also are going to be using a twin-shaff asphalt mixer. The purpose of this device is to let the mix, the mixing chamber of the double barrel devote, be devoted just to drying that recycle. And this is key because it keeps that steam from the, the drying of the recycle away from the virgin asphalt. Because remember, the virgin asphalt contains a lot of light ends that have been added to it to give it the properties it needs for when we're maybe making paving mixtures. So, when we drive off those light ends, they're gone and that preages mix. So, this is a better system than, than most locations that don't have that, that secondary mixing device. So, what drops out of the mixing chamber of the double barrel will be a mixture of, of recycle up to 50% as well as virgin aggregates and the dust from the baghouse. Once it hits the twin-shaff mixer, we will add the, the appropriate quantity of the virgin asphalt cement to bring it up to the amount of content that the job mix formula calls for. It will pass through this, this asphalt mixer, drop into the boot section of the drag conveyor, and that's going to transport all of that mix up to the top of the storage silos. And it can go into any one of the, the six silos. I think they're starting with three and then there'll be three future if business takes off. But it'll just await to be dropped into the trucks. You'll notice that the, the double barrel is also going to be fitted with a Lownox burner that is more than capable of meeting the current New Jersey state-of-the-art requirements for a hot mix plant because our plant, our burner was actually what the soda was developed based on. And we agreed to, to limit our emissions from our burner beyond what even the state of New Jersey required. And they backed off of that standard. Okay? This burner right here that you guys hopefully are going to approve for this customer, I'm now specking in a large portion of Southern California. That, that's significant. Moving on, the plant also is, is going to be outfitted with a fabric filter baghouse and this is going to remove the particulate matter at an efficiency of over 99.96% from the gas stream. Because that dust coming out of the, the dryer, out of the double barrel, that's important. It becomes part of the mix. So, we want all that dust back. So, we, we filter it out with big fabric socks, if you will. They're, they're hanging bags. It's a pulsed jet technology where we use a short burst of compressed air to knock that dust back off the bags. It falls down at the hopper section of the conveyor. There's an auger in the bottom that's going to transfer it to one end. After it exits the hopper of the baghouse, it falls into a couple of transfer screws to transport that dust right back over to the mixing chamber so we can add it back into the mix outside of the gas stream that's on the inner rotating drum. Over on the right-hand side of the page, oh, sorry, I skipped the dry out of it, sorry. The dry out of silos, they can be used for, for any number of things and you'll have to forgive me, I'm going to look to see what's going in this one. Sometimes we use them for dust, sometimes we use them for lime. And I've been working with a lot of plants in permitting here lately, so I just want to make sure which one this one is before I tell you the wrong thing. I believe this one was, I'm not, I'm not readily seeing it right now, but it's typically overflowed dust. That way, if there's too much dust coming off the aggregates, we meter back in exactly what is necessary to meet the job mix formula. Certain mixes, they require other fillers. And so, that silo could also be used if they needed to use lime or any other additives that would contribute to adhesion of the, the binder to the aggregates themselves. Going on to the next one. Talked about the rat bins. They are, they are separate to the cold feed bins because the, the aggregates fed into the outer chamber of the double barrel. Same, same principle of operation. You've got recycle that's broken down by its size and different gradations, drops onto a collecting conveyor, passes over a scalping screen. It too has an incline conveyor with a weigh bridge to allow us to know exactly how much material is being fed to the drum at any given moment in time. Because that recycle is valuable because it already contains a significant portion of the asphalt cement that's going to go into the finished paving mixtures. Tank farm equipment, this is where there will be several asphalt storage tanks that will hold the various paving binders. Different binders are used for different types of roadways. So, you wouldn't use necessarily the same thing on a, on a parking lot that you would use on a, on a main roadway. So, they need several solid, or several tanks to be able to hold the different performance grades of, of asphalt binder. The tank farm will also contain a hot oil heater. That is a device, it's a small boiler that's going to heat thermal transfer fluid that we then pump through all the equipment, particularly asphalt tanks, in order to keep everything hot and to keep the, the asphalt cement liquid so that we can pump it over to the other equipment.
And before you move on to the next one, that, that tank equipment is surrounded by a wall?
Yes, it is.
And that, that wall is designed to hold, if there's any type of, hold the contents of one of those silos if, I used the wrong word, silo, but containers if there were to be a spill.
The tank. Yes, it is. They're, they are designed to control, I believe it's 110%. Do not hold me that, I'm not the structural engineer. Our structural engineers size those walls. But it's, it's over 100% of the largest tank. But they have to take into account the volume of space of just the equipment sitting there as well. And in addition, it sizes to, to handle a significant rain event and that's based on the area where the plant's going to be. So, those walls are going to be more than sufficient to handle any, any fluid that, that could possibly end up inside the walls in the event of a catastrophic failure. And that's what it would have to be for a tank to let go. We've never had that happen.
But it, would it hold the total capacity of all the tanks?
Not of all the tanks, no.
So, what happens if, if you catastrophic, that, you know, a tornado hits?
Well, remember that, that liquid asphalt is just that. It's liquid when it's heated, but the minute you, you take its heat source away from it, it starts cooling very quickly. So, the, the minute you lose power to the hot oil heater, the asphalt is going to start setting up inside those tanks. It's not going to come out. So, if a, if a tornado came along, you're likely to knock them over, but it would, it would have to, these, these are welded down. So, we're talking about a, a significant storm.
Now, is there power backup for this plant?
I, I would have to ask the customer. It's handled differently by different customers.
Okay.
That, that was, that was the quick overview of, of the equipment. The mix storage, as I kind of, I mentioned those, just they're going to hold the-
Okay. I'm, real quick, I'm going to ask the questions that Michael San- Real quick, I'm going to ask the questions that Michael Sanclimeti asked.
Okay.
His first question, is the production system fault tolerant?
Repeat that, please.
Is the production system fault tolerant?
Fault tolerant. What is, well, do you know what he means by fault tolerant?
I don't.
Okay.
Probably if something happens...
Can it run out of compliance?
Exactly.
Is the way I'm interpreting that.
Exactly.
And no, you can't, because there are sensors all over this equipment. We don't want them running out of tolerance in terms of temperature, because it damages the equipment. Beyond damaging equipment, it also would make them make pavement that isn't good. And let me tell you, no one wants to put down pavement that's going to have to get milled back up and replaced, because that costs everybody money. So no, our equipment has the sensors, it's all computer-controlled, and that's to ensure that the plant is operated in a certain manner, so that it's going to produce good mix, it's going to meet the environmental compliance requirements, and they're not going to damage the equipment by operating it incorrectly.
His next question, what is the routine maintenance schedule for the production system?
We have daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, semi-annual, and annual maintenance schedules. They're extensive. I will be more than happy to provide those, but I do not have them with me, and I can't rattle them off off the top of my head, because I'm not in the service department.
And who does the maintenance? Will one of the, one of the...
They will have...
They will provide a person that's trained by your company?
When we sell a plant, yes. Part of the procedure when the plant is installed, it even says right here on the contract, that they're going to get 21 days of service. That means that they're going to have, and it really, it's however long that we need to have people on site. 21 is just in the contract, it usually is much longer than that. Our service technicians are up there. They're teaching them how to operate the plant. They're teaching them how to run the reports. They're teaching them how to maintain the equipment. So yes, we have staff that will be on-site with them while the equipment is being set up, because we're even installing their equipment for them. So when they're ready to push the button, our trained technicians will be the one running the plant to begin with, as they're teaching.
Before we move on to the next question, does the board want copies of those maintenance manuals?
I think that, Jack?
It wouldn't hurt, you know, when we do stormwater, we ask for operation and maintenance manuals. I think it would be good to have in our records.
Okay.
In case something happens, we can always question whether it was done properly.
Right.
And I just want, Ted, sorry.
Do you want just the maintenance charts, or do you want full operation and service manuals? Because I can call...
I don't think we need the service manuals.
No, just the maintenance portion.
Just the charts, okay.
Okay. Next question, what is the routine maintenance schedule for the system that brings the material to the production system? The conveyors and the bins?
I will provide, when I provide you the maintenance schedules, I'm going to give it to you for the entire facility.
Okay. Does routine maintenance cost significant downtime?
No, that's the whole purpose of them doing the routine maintenance, is to prevent them having unscheduled downtime. That's why we have spent the time that we have to develop these extensive charts, so the customers know, hey, you need to take care of this, so that your equipment is going to continue to run properly at all times.
His next, caveat to that, was how long would L&amp;L Paving be unable to produce asphalt during the maintenance routine?
It depends on what the maintenance task is. Like I said, some of the maintenance is replenishing lubricants.
Right.
So you're just greasing, and I don't do that. So to be honest, I don't know how quickly you can, it's going to depend on which maintenance task it is, because some of them can be a few hours, some of them can be a few minutes.
But there's a chart, and so...
There's a chart, yeah.
If they're doing maintenance, and some sort of major maintenance, they would know well in advance that they're going to do some sort of maintenance to a belt or...
That's right. Normally, you would schedule maintenance, and you schedule it usually on a day where, hey, we can't be making mix, because the weather isn't cooperative. But they can use that opportunity to be working on the equipment, so that it's not down when they need it to be running.
The next one, you've already answered, but I'm going to ask it anyway, since it'd be on the recording. What is the routine maintenance schedule? Monthly, semi-annually, etc.? You answered that.
Yes.
Okay. Is a computer system fault tolerant? Basically, the same question for the production system, but the computer system.
Well, you can't divorce the computer controls from the equipment itself, because they're tied to each other.
Right.
And so that's why we're using all these electronic devices to monitor equipment performance, so that the computer knows, can I continue allowing production, or do I need to shut the plant down? So it's the computer controls that are not going to allow the faults. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Because the equipment doesn't care. It's the sensors on the equipment that care what it's doing.
Okay. Now, his next question, what is the routine maintenance schedule for the computer system? Is that updated regularly? Monthly, you know, is there updates for that?
Our controls department will issue upgrades, or they'll do it on kind of an as-needed basis. It's not like, it's like, it's like you've got windows, okay? There's patches and stuff. So we do those occasionally, but it's on an as-needed basis, okay? It's usually not to ensure the equipment is going to continue operating, it's to make things a little easier, okay? For stability purposes. But I'm not a controls engineer, so I can tell you, they don't have a frequency the way we do on the mechanical side for the equipment. Upgrades or patches for the controls, simply on an as-needed basis.
Okay. I don't know if this is a question that you could answer. During the routine maintenance, if the production is halted during the maintenance, how will L&amp;L Paving inform their customer the location will be unable to produce asphalt until maintenance is completed? I think that's operational.
Well, I can tell, well, the question itself is the problem, because they're not going to, if, that would be an unscheduled maintenance, okay? You're not going to schedule it during a production time. That would be because something has happened, you know, the equipment's down. So that's totally different. And L&amp;L will have to address how they intend to inform their customers that their equipment is down, for whatever reason.
Okay. Okay. Was this asphalt production system available during the 1960s through the 90s?
The double barrel itself was developed in the late 80s. However, the double barrel that we built in 2018 is much, much different than the one that was developed, I believe it was in 1988. The cold-feed bins, they're very similar to what's been on plants for probably 50 years or more. Our baghouse, pulchette technology has been out a while. It's been out for decades as well. Our burner was developed less than 10 years ago, so that is totally new technology. The silos, we've been building on probably about 20 years or so, because our silos are different than other people's silos, because these have a seal system on the top gate and on the bottom discharge gate, that allows those silos to go into a storage mode that will prevent that mix from degrading for up to four days. That way, say, an unexpected storm comes in, they've got all this mix put up, they don't want to waste that, it's costly. So they put those silos in the storage mode, they ride out the storm, and then they resume four days later, like that mix was just made. So that is a newer technology. So yes, there are some things on the plant that would be no different than a plant made in the 60s, but the components that are responsible, if you will, for the emissions from the facility, those are state-of-the-art.
Was the asphalt production system available 10 years ago or five years ago? You know, I think you answered that question. What is the difference between the system you're proposing to L&amp;L today, as opposed to the systems of today and years ago?
One of the bigger changes, if we, when we think back to probably the 50s and 60s, and I know there's a lot of plants up in the New England area, because I've spent a lot of time up here at plants, many, many decades ago, it was very popular to use batch plants, where you actually put, you would dry the aggregate, and you would send it up into the tower, and you would separate out this, these different aggregates by size in bins, not out on the yard in the cold-feed bins, but up in the tower itself. And then you would meter out of those bins into a weigh box, so you had the amount of rock that you needed, and you'd drop it in the pug mill, and then you'd add the asphalt. And you would make discreet batches of whatever size that were then dropped directly into the trucks, okay? That's not quite as efficient. And a lot of those plants, if you look at the emissions from the old batch plants, they're much more significant in terms of how much pollutants they're putting out than the newer, modern counterflow drum mix continuous plants. So the plant that's being proposed at this location, I could take it right now into probably two-thirds to three-quarters of the state of California.
That's all the questions he had given me. He just wanted to make sure that they were covered.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. I see that everything looks like it's state-of-the-art equipment, you know, brand-new. And as far as security goes, if something malfunctions or breaks, is it on the individual unit itself, or is it all tied to the computer system? So one person could see everything that's going on through the computer system? I mean, how would they detect if something's going to happen?
Well, we can't necessarily predict something's going to happen. But let's say a motor went out, okay? They can bring up on their plant control house computer a screen, and it will tell them exactly which motor just went out.
But it won't tell them it's going to go out, or it's overheating, or something like that?
If they particularly are watching it, and let's see that it's pulling more amps than it normally is, you would have some indicators. But most of the time, when you're making mix, you're not sitting there personally, the operator, just watching the motor screen.
Has there ever been any explosions in the past with this type of equipment?
No, not to my knowledge.
And is there any internal fire system in any of the units themselves? How would you handle a fire if it happened?
Well, the double barrel itself, there have been fires inside of the double barrel. And let me tell you what causes that. Usually, the loader operator didn't get enough material back into the recycle bin, because in order to dry the recycle, we overheat the virgin aggregates. And we just use that heat transfer to dry off the recycle. So if they ran out of rap, that's what happens, it flashes. But the fire is contained within the double barrel itself. And what we've done is we've got all these temperature sensors now that's on the double barrel itself, so that, because normally, if there's a fire in the double barrel, you can't see it. We would have no idea that one was even going. So we've got temperature sensors that allow the operator to know, hey, there's a problem, so that everything can shut down. Because the minute those temperature sensors go off on the double barrel, it kills the double barrel or the burner flame, so that we're not generating any more heat. The only thing that's allowed to continue running is just the virgin aggregate. And the reason being, we want all that cold, wet aggregate to start coming in, to start cooling that drum back off, okay?
Okay.
Now, the bags in the baghouse, they're made out of Nomex. Nomex is related to Kevlar, which, as you know, is what they use to make fire protective clothing. So the baghouse itself is only a fire hazard when customers use waste oil. That's not the case here at L&amp;L. They're going to be running natural gas. So the baghouse, Nomex doesn't burn. So the baghouse fire is not an issue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So then I take it, then, fire suppression equipment wouldn't be necessary, is that...
In our experience, it has not been, no. Because there are sensors, there are, it's part of the NFPA, and again, I'm not one of our burner engineers, but there are regulations that we have to adhere to to build the burner itself. So there are systems on that, that it's, we use a flame detection system, but it's a safeguard, flame safeguard system known as FireEye, that allows us to totally monitor exactly what that burner is doing at all times, so that we can shut off the fuel immediately. And we don't wait for the operator to react, because humans can be too slow. So that's why the computer's doing it. And if the safeguard system detects a situation it doesn't like, it shuts the burner down. And some of our customers don't like that, because it's like, maybe there really wasn't anything wrong. So this thing kind of goes overboard, and you have to waste mix, and you start right back up. But the boiler burner over in the tank farm, it has that same type of flame safeguard system, so, because that is the combustion process. So that's being monitored as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Since you have a computer operating the system, I assume that you maintain records, so that if some, let's assume somebody came in to inspect the system and said, I heard XYZ a month ago, can you retrieve that data?
Our software is capable of generating numerous reports. It's constantly monitoring. I would have to, I would just have to ask our control guys exactly what all is being recorded, because I don't know what all. I know we monitor so much. How much is actually being retained in reports? I'm not sure. I know production and different operating parameters are being retained, because they have to be submitted to the state for ongoing compliance, for permits, yes.
So the state could come in and see those critical factors that are necessary.
Yep.
Are the patches sent remotely?
Yes, they can be.
And do you ever, or is it in the system that your people down at home can monitor what's going on?
We have to call up here, and we have to log in, so we can't just, like, take over their plant.
No, you can't.
But yes, once we have entered the appropriate credentials, we could run their plant from Chattanooga.
I have one other question, and I have to...
John, turn on your microphone. Microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said that when the dust collectors drop the dust down, it goes into a lead screw of some sort and feeds it. Is that lead screw semi-closed up, so it doesn't create external dust?
Oh, it is totally enclosed. It's down in the hopper of the baghouse itself, so you, can you pull the picture of the baghouse back up?
Stop, stop.
Right there. It's a little hard to see, but you've got the vertical walls, and right below that, the walls slope in like this, and it becomes a hopper. And at the very bottom of that hopper, you have the auger. And so that whole system is totally enclosed. And the baghouse is under negative pressure at all times, so dust is not going to get out of this. We're actually pulling into it, not allowing anything out. We have to actually use an airlock to equalize the pressure, to allow us to feed the dust out of the device.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No questions. No, no questions.
Okay. Before we turn it over for cross-examination, I'm gonna take a 10-minute break and then we'll let you resume that time. The board will reconvene at 10 till 9.
The zoning board is reconvened.
Thank you. Mr. Gazarovski, as we left, open it up for you, cross-examination.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Ms. Sutton Show.
Good evening.
First I want to, uh, I truly want to compliment you on the comprehensiveness of your testimony. I think you led us through it and I believe I understand, uh, the basic parameters of how this plant would work. And I, I thought your comments were insightful and, uh, were good. Uh, I'd like if we could get the last, uh, exhibit of the book onto the screen which reflects the mix storage silos. Now, am I correct in saying that at the end of a day, after utilizing all of the other equipment which is shown on the previous pictures, all that is being manufactured, the manufactured product is stored in these silos?
That's correct.
Okay. So I was a little bit confused by the exhibit showing the tank farm equipment. That just really stores certain materials that go into making the end result of the product. Is that correct?
Yeah, those are feed materials.
Okay, thank you. Now, with regard to the silos themselves, uh, I'm, I'm sure you've examined the plans which were submitted to this board, did you not?
I personally have not looked at the entire supplemental, no. I've looked at our materials.
If I tell you that the plans call for a total of six, uh, silos, you'll accept that, will you not?
It's my understanding that there's, that there's three, uh, proposed initially and then there's, there's plans for a potential expansion of three additional.
But there's, there are six shown on this exhibit that you have, are there not?
Yes, and, and you'll notice that some of these on the outer scale say future. And I just showed the picture that I sent to them was so they would see what it would look like when all six of them were on site.
Ultimately, is your understanding that the plans themselves, as well as the application call for, at the end of a day, the possible expansion to six silos?
It's common for customers. I don't know whether they've put that in their plans or not. I've not seen that. I know we've got on our drawings just, cause it's easier to pour concrete at the beginning.
Okay.
If they're gonna do that.
Now you say it's common for customers, meaning that in plants of this nature with the barrel size, it's common to have six silos?
No, in, in a market where you have a lot of different customers and you might need to, to make a lot of different types of paving mixtures, it's more common to have more silos. Most customers have multiple silos at this point.
Okay. Meaning six?
Not necessarily six, with some four, some 10. I mean, it's, it's all over the, it's all over the place.
Okay. Now, do you know what the height is of these silos?
Right off the top of my head, no, I do not.
Okay, but whatever the plans show, that's what they are?
Yes.
How about with regard to the capacity of the individual silos?
Each of these is 300 ton capacity.
300 tons capacity?
Each, yeah.
Now, as I look at this photograph, this also shows, uh, trucks which are positioned underneath the silo, so I take it, a truck will pull under an individual silo and the mix comes directly from the silo into the truck?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, uh, do you know what the capacity of the average truck, which I would take it is somewhat uniform, how many tons will the average truck hold?
It is not uniform, sir. It depends on, on, on the, whether it's a, a tandem axle, a dual axle, whether it's got a trailer behind it. I don't get into the trucks. I do the environmental equipment predominantly. Cause it's all over the place in the US.
I understand. But in other words, whatever the type of truck is used, each truck may have a different capacity, perhaps 10 tons, 20 tons, or whatever it may be.
It could be more, yeah.
So whatever, if we wanna determine how many trucks would come onto this site, uh, we could theoretically take the six silos and multiply it by 300 and come up with a total storage capacity of the six silos, right?
I, I can't address loading, loading trucks.
Okay. Let me, let me go back one step to make sure I've got my number right. I believe you said that each of those silos holds 300 tons.
It does.
And that would be manufactured, uh, down below and then it goes by conveyor up to the top of the silo and dropped into the silo.
It does.
And if all of these silos were, uh, utilized and filled to capacity, we'd come up with 1,800 tons of, of product. Multiply six times 300.
1,800.
Okay, fine. Now, let's go back if I can, uh, if I could identify it properly. To the, uh, perhaps, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm looking at the Low Nox burner with a silencer. Now, I, I take it that there's a particular piece of equipment whereby the mix that ultimately goes up into the silo is manufactured, correct?
The finished mix is made in the twin shaft mixer.
Okay.
That's where the liquid asphalt cement is added to the aggregates.
So you must be able to tell me then, in a plant such as this, how many tons of mix can be produced per hour?
400 tons.
400 tons?
400 tons per hour. That's, that's a virgin mix at 5%.
All right. So obviously i- i- if we're talking in terms of, uh, what the total production would be for a day, it all depends upon the number of hours that that is operating and what the capacity is remaining in the silos.
Total, the total production of the day, it depends on the market and who they've got to sell the mix to. You're not gonna make mix if you don't have somebody to sell it to.
Well, look, I, I understand that, but you also have a total, you have a total capacity.
Plant, the plant cannot run 24 hours continuously.
Okay, fine. Tell me how many hours it can run continuously?
Um, to be honest, I, I don't know. Um, because there's gonna be time for maintenance and as I testified earlier, um, I don't do the maintenance. So how long it's gonna take to perform some of those maintenance tasks because some of them have to be done before production starts up? Um, they could easily run 10 hours, but they're not gonna be running at full capacity.
Well, but, but you don't know that, do you?
Um, they'd run out of, they'd, they would run out of storage.
Run out of storage or run out of product? Out of storage?
Run out of storage.
Right. They wouldn't be able to fit all of that into the silo.
No, that's what's gonna limit this plant.
Well, but also while they're doing that, aren't there also trucks coming in to unload product out of the silo? So as the silo, as, as mix is going into the silo, it's also going out by the bottom.
You, you can be loading a silo and you can be loading out from same silo, yes. But we don't ever fully empty the silos either because you don't want that mix to, uh, it's, it's better if you're dropping in slugs onto other existing mix so they build up a certain portion so that there's always material down into those cones. So you're never gonna empty the silo either.
Would it, would it be, would it be fair to say that listening to your testimony and your greatest, uh, area of expertise is in the environmental concerns of the operation of this facility, correct?
That's correct.
And I guess the person for me to ask how much they actually intend to manufacture per day would be the operator himself.
That's correct.
The operator would know how many truckloads he expects to, uh, push out of the plant per day, correct?
That's correct.
Now, am I correct in saying that as you're pushing product out of the plant, you also have to bring the aggregate and the other raw materials into the plant to convert into the final product?
If we need feed materials, the plant's not gonna run.
So you've got trucks coming in to bring in material and you've got trucks going out to deliver the material to jobs.
Yes, and you need to ask questions about trucking of, of the, of the applicant because it has nothing to do with the actual operation of our equipment.
I understand that. But do you think it's a one-to-one ratio, in other words, for every truck that you send out?
She's already, he's already asked that question.
I'm sorry? I didn't hear the answer.
I object. You've already asked that question. She has, Ms. Sutton Show has no, no knowledge about the, the trucks that are gonna be coming in, in and out of the property. So he's, he's asking the same question in a different fashion.
She gave a lot of, she gave a lot of testimony with regard to the silos, the mix, the bringing of the aggregate onto the site, the storing it into bins and all of those things. I don't, I don't think it's such an outlandish question that she doesn't have the ability to answer.
Well, I think that would be an operations question though, Mr. Gazarovski.
Okay, I'll save it for operations.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like you to answer this question if you can. If you cannot, uh, you don't have to answer it. Do you know how many Aztec plants that are located in both Ocean and Monmouth Counties? In other words, plants where you have produced and delivered a plant for operation in Ocean and in Monmouth Counties?
I would have to look at our records back at the office. I do not personally have that information right at this moment.
Now, when you speak in terms earlier, we were talking about, uh, the number of silos contained on the site where, I think you might've indicated they were gonna start with three, but they had the capacity to go up to six. Didn't you say that?
Uh huh.
Okay. Now, uh, are you familiar with the operator in this particular application? Do you know the nature of his business?
They're currently a paving operation, is my understanding.
Okay. Now, if, if one is operating a paving operation and utilizing their product for their paving, would they have a need for six silos?
I, I, I don't, I'm gonna object to that question. There's really no basis for, for the, the question even to be asked.
I agree. I think that's an operation.
Okay. By the way, I do intend to get into those questions and operations.
I, I agree. But I don't think this applic-, I, I don't think this witness is able to answer that.
I understand, Mr. Turner, okay? So I would also advise the board that when I cross-examine the operator, I, I do intend to go beyond, uh, the glossy picture that he painted in his direct testimony.
I, I, I understand that. I don't have a problem with that.
And just for the record, I, I, I take offense to him trying to classify my, my client's testimony for anything than what it is than what it was.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I'm happy with what it is. Uh, with regard to these silos, and we spoke in terms of their capacity, how long, if you know, how long does it take to fill up a silo?
Well, um, it would take three quarters of an hour if the plant was producing its rated capacity of 400 tons per hour since they store 300 tons.
Now, one thing which I found interesting is that, I think what you're also saying in these different silos, you can have different types of mixes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if, for example, uh, you had an order for 250 tons of a particular mixer, 150 tons of a particular mix, you could take an empty silo, put that 150 tons into it and then empty it out.
That's correct.
Is that the way it works? Now, does this plant have the capacity of manufacturing both a hot mix as well as a cold mix?
Cold mix, no. Warm mix, yes.
I'm sorry. So it's, it's hot and or warm, correct?
No, there is such a thing as cold mix.
Oh, there is?
There is. But this plant is not capable of producing cold mix.
Could you tell us what the difference is between a hot mix and a warm mix? Does it solely have to do, uh, with how long it takes before it can be put down?
Uh, hot mixes is traditionally any mixes that are 300 degrees Fahrenheit or more. Um, anything below 300 degrees is typically a warm mix. Um, if it's got recycle in it, you're, you usually can't get below about 275 degrees Fahrenheit. If you've got a re-, a virgin mix, you can sometimes get down to 260 degrees Fahrenheit and the mix still be workable. Um, the big difference between a warm mix and a hot mix is what has been done to the asphalt to make it still workable when they get it to the paving site. And in the case of the, the Aztec warm mix system, we foam the asphalt with water instead of any sort of harmful chemicals like some of our competitors use. Um, all we do is we inject water at high pressure into the asphalt. That water goes off into steam.
Excuse me, is it when it's in the silo or when it's in?
No, it's, it's, it's as the liquid asphalt is being injected into the mixing, uh, twin shaft mixer itself, we'll, we'll put the water in right as the asphalt is going down in the mixer. And all that water does is it creates a whole bunch of little bubbles, little steam bubbles that are caught and it expands the, the volume, if you will, of the asphalt. And it makes a warm mix that's at a lower temperature act like a hot mix. And it actually increases how long they'll have to work that material on the, on the roadways.
What, what percentile would you think in this particular plant, you would use the warm mix or is that determined solely by the operator?
Solely by the operator.
Is it fair to say that when one is using a warm mix, that it can be, it could be transported longer distances?
There's limits, whether it's hot mix or, or warm mix, on haul distances and it has to do with atmospheric conditions. And so once it leaves our silos, it's nothing to do with us. I can't tell you anything about haul distance.
Okay. Answer this question if you can. Uh, what is the purpose of utilizing a warm mix as compared to a hot mix?
It, it makes it easier to, to lay it down. It saves money. It uses less fuel. It saves emissions. It's easier on the equipment itself because it lowers the viscosity of the liquid asphalt cement in the mixing. So there's, there's great benefits all the way around to doing warm mix.
And when you say, when you say it's easier to put down, does that mean that it can travel a longer distance and be put down as compared to a hot mix?
I have no idea how long it can be hauled. What I'm talking about is it's easier to, cause when you drop it into, um, the material transfer device, I'm assuming they have a shuttle buggy, cause they're pretty common. And what that does is it kinda re-blends it and then puts it up into the paver. It's because of the foamed asphalt, it's easier on the equipment. It's easier for us to transport it up into the silos with a drag conveyor because it's less viscous. So as, I, I have no idea about haul distance, okay?
Okay. How about with regard to durability of the product itself? Does a warm mix, if say put down on a highway, last as long as a hot mixer or is there no difference?
According to a lot of the studies that have been done and a lot of different DOTs are doing studies, NCAT has also been doing a lot of studies, the, the warm mixes perform just as well, if not better than hot mix. There's actually some studies that are showing that the warm mixes actually perform better overall than a hot mix and it's because, if you'll remember my testimony back in July, we talked about the light ends that get stripped out of the, the asphalt when you overheat it.
Yeah.
And all that blue smoke comes off. Well, those light ends are what give a paving binder its properties. And so when you boil them all off, then that, that mix that you make isn't gonna last as long, okay? So warm mix, you retain all those because you're making mix below the boiling point of those compounds. So you end up with a better overall mix that's not been pre-aged before it leaves the plant.
Are you familiar with the specifications or standards as required by the state of New Jersey, for example, in regard to placing paving down on the Garden State Parkway?
I'm not. I don't get into paving.
You know whether they use a hot mix or a warm mix?
I have no idea. I, I'm not familiar with the DOT standards required here in New Jersey.
Okay. With regard to having a plant that has six, uh, storage tanks, w- within your company, would you regard that as being a local plant or a regional plant?
Is it storage tanks?
Yes.
Um, it's, storage tanks-
Storage, storage silos, I'm sorry, silos.
Oh, I was gonna say, tanks are depending on what binder they're gonna store.
I'm talking about, I'm sorry, I'm talking about silos.
There again, the, the use of multiple silos is to give them the ability to make different mixes because you can't put the same mix, two different types of mix in a single silo. So it has nothing to do with- So it has nothing to do with how far they're going to take mix, which is what you're asking. It has to do with how many mixes they need to be able to produce, depending on what their customer base is. Are they going to pave parking lots? Are they going to pave driveways? Are they going to pave roadways? Well, there's three mixes right there, okay? So it has to do not with how far they're taking the mix, it has to do with how many mixes they need to produce and store on, for a time period at any given day.
In other words, you would use a different mix, say, for example, the Parkway as compared to one that you would utilize for paving a local supermarket?
Yes. It, paving mixtures, and I, I'm by no means am a paving mixture expert, but I've done enough reading to know that it has to do with how much traffic is expected on that roadway and whether there's going to be cars moving on it, what speed they're expected to be moving on it, or whether they're going to be parked on it. Hence, the difference between a paving mixture for a parking lot and a roadway.
So if in fact, if in fact, your base of business has more to do with highway traffic such as parkways or whatnot, that requires a completely different type of mix?
You would, you make different mixes based on your, your customer base.
Okay. I just have maybe a question or two left in this room. I have no further questions, and I thank you very much for your time.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to open the public. Before I do that, I just want to advise the public, this is for questions of this witness dealing with the plant, in the plant only. She does not know the operations, decibels, noises, except what submitted by the plant. So if you've got any questions, come forward for this witness. Please do not ask the same question over and over, okay? Can I have a motion to open the public?
Motion to open.
Motion to open to the public.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Merton. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Anyone from the public wish to ask a question of this witness? Come forward, be sworn in, please.
Please, please swear that the testimony of this evening is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth of the matter. Please stand up, uh, in my turn, please, your name and your address on the record.
Uh, my name is Michael Nannini, 30, West Chaucer Lane, Formiddel. Howl, Formiddel mail address. I have one quick question. Um, in previous questions, you mentioned about loading the trucks from the silos. Is there any other way to load the trucks other than the silos?
Not at this type of facility, no. This is a continuous mix plant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Come forward, please.
Great, great answer. Swear the testimony here this evening is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth of the matter. Thank you, sir. Can we just use the microphone and state your name and address on the record?
My name is Thomas Bany. I live at 11 Yellow Brook Road. My question to you is, if the silos that are going to be filled and unloaded, how are the trucks going to get there down Yellow Brook Road?
I think that's an operational question.
Because we have 200 trucks a day going down that damn road now.
Sir, no comments. Questions to this witness, please.
That was my question.
It's not a question she can answer. That's an operation question.
Probably can't answer that, can you?
I have, I have nothing to do with traffic. I'm from Chattanooga, Tennessee. I've never even been on Yellow Brook Road, so I know nothing about traffic patterns up there.
No, this is, I'm not answering questions. This is solely for questions of Catherine.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, C and N, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. All right. My next witness is going to be Gary Dean.
Thank you, ma'am.
I don't remember if he was sworn in. If he was, then we'll, we'll do it again.
No, let's go ahead and swear him in and qualify him, please.
Yep.
Yes, Gary, you were previously sworn in.
Very good, thank you.
But you will need to be qualified, but just place your name on the record.
Hi, Mr. Dean. If you could just place your name on the record and, uh, can you please provide the board with your qualifications?
Certainly. Uh, for the record, Gary Dean, D-E-A-N. Professional address is 181 West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey. By way of background, I'm a 1983 graduate of Lehigh University with a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering. I'm a former member of the faculty of Lehigh University and Lafayette College, having served as an adjunct professor teaching transportation engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey and have been since 1988, and I've been qualified before roughly 350 or so planning and zoning boards, as well as in Superior Court. My appearances in Howell, to the best of my recollection, have been before the planning board, uh, but the projects were principally commercial uses along Route 9, including Autozone, Dunkin' Donuts, the new Quick Check and CVS that just opened, um, as well as, um, residential subdivision further to the west.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Gazarovski, you have?
I have no questions. I'm satisfied.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And you will be testifying in reference to traffic, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dean, um, did you, uh, study the site in question?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and you prepared a report that's been submitted to the board?
I think there were two reports, actually, um, but yes, that's correct. The first one is a traffic impact assessment for L and L Paving Company. It was prepared originally in March of 2017 and updated on April 23rd of this year. The second report was, uh, a traffic signal warrant analysis for Route 33 and Yellow Brook Road. That was prepared, uh, in December of last year, and I'll explain what that document means during my testimony.
Okay. If you can maybe get into those documents in your studies, then?
Certainly. But before I get into some of the numbers and projections, uh, obviously, we're here seeking a use variance, which means, um, through the, the process, this use was considered not to be permitted in the zone. From a traffic engineering perspective, I, I believe one of my responsibilities is to assess whether the proposed use, in this case, the bituminous concrete plant, deviates substantially from what we would expect to be developed in the zone. Um, and we've, what I've done is reviewed the permitted uses within the SED zone to identify traffic volumes and the characteristics of traffic that we might otherwise expect. In other words, if an application were before the planning board, what are the types of traffic we might expect with those uses? The zone permits a variety of, I'll say, somewhat intensive activities, including assembly and packaging, construction, which I infer to mean yards or operations, agricultural, agricultural and forestry uses, financial uses, a medical center, manufacturing, as you've heard previously, recreational and sports complexes, office uses, and warehousing and distribution. So before I get into sort of the nuts and bolts of this application, within that spectrum of land uses, you can see that they, that they are all fairly intensive traffic generators, and most of them would consist of heavy truck and equipment activity, particularly...
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to object to this line of question and answering because it's really purely speculative. We're here this evening for one application, one site, and what use. This, this witness is speculating as to what perhaps if another end user were going to utilize the property, how he was going to use it. That's just simply not relevant to this application.
Okay, noted, but I'm going to allow the testimony to continue because it, we, at this board, we have always wanted to know what could go there. What could go there, what uses could go there, and then what the density could be on that use. And so, I, your, your objection is noted, but I am going to allow it to continue. Mr. Butler.
Mr. Dean, if you could continue.
Certainly. In, in terms of the very issues of density, you, you, the ordinance does not prescribe a minimum floor area ratio, and we have a planner that will get into more of the specifics of the planning concerns. But what that means is the ordinance doesn't cap the building size. What it does is it caps the amount of hard surface, paving, buildings, things of that nature, and it's 70%. The overall tract is just over 35 acres, which is roughly, I believe, if my math is correct, a million and a half square feet. So as we start to apply things like maximum impervious coverage, and then I start to contrast that with the what-if, what could be built under the zone plan, and I haven't done it for every use, but it's a, a reasonableness of about a half a million square feet of something. And that something could be an office building, it could be a manufacturing building, a light industrial, warehouse and distribution. It may be bigger because the parking standards vary for each use. The most intensive parking standard, and I'll explain why that's relevant, is office, which requires a lot of parking per square feet. A warehouse and a manufacturing can be a bigger building, but it doesn't require as much parking. But again, just for general discussion purposes, I've considered, at the high end of the spectrum in terms of traffic, a half a million square foot office building, which would have about 2,000 parking spaces. And again, doing some back-of-the-envelope math, we'll assume that the parking spaces were filled on a daily basis by employees, both arriving in the morning and leaving at night, yielding, again, for rough discussion purposes, 4,000 trips on Yellow Brook Road. That's what the zone plan says should be on this site. As we start to look at other uses, manufacturing, we have less traffic, more automation, and certainly less with even a warehouse, but we have more truck traffic that would be expected. And the basis for some of my numbers comes from studies that have been collected and compiled by the International Group of Traffic Engineers, known as ITE, or the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And among other functions that that group serves is, as I've indicated, they, they collect counts, data that's been compiled for like land uses. They publish the data in a, in a publication known as Trip Generation, and we're up to the 10th edition, and it was released in 2017. Aside from overall traffic numbers, ITE can also tell us truck numbers. And for a warehouse or manufacturing use, those truck numbers, and clearly, these are estimates. It is somewhat speculative because we don't know the end user. So in lieu of knowing the end user, we rely on these, on this ITE publication to give us all some guidance for similar type uses. And the truck activity for a warehouse, distribution facility, or even manufacturing, again, just by looking at the book value, would be in the hundreds of trucks per day, us on top of hundreds of employee-related or automobile trips for the given uses. So that's what the zone plan says, hey, if, if an application came before the planning board for something permitted, this is the type of traffic and volume the community would expect to see on Yellow Brook Road. Now, we've gotten into, how does that contrast or compare with the subject application? And, and to formulate some of our projections, obviously, we consulted with the applicant in that the end user is known. So the number of trucks per day, based on their anticipated business model, has a little higher degree of, we'll say, certainty than just going to the book where we don't know the end user. Um, and throughout the preparation of our reports, we consulted with the applicant as to, uh, expected tonnage, which translates into truckloads. Um, and in our report, we estimated 60 trucks a day. Now, at the time, that was for, um, we, we actually prepared a couple of different versions of this report. There was a recycling facility that had originally been proposed. Um, we did include the volumes of traffic with that use, um, but it's my understanding that there's some debate with the county as to whether that, in fact, will be permitted. Um, but we did include an estimate of truck and traffic arrivals for the asphalt plant as well as for the recycling operation. And based on the daily loads, what we then did is prepare an estimate on the peak hours. And peak hours are an important time for traffic engineers. And the way we determine the peak hours is we basically count traffic. We put people out in the field, or we'll install a machine, or sometimes both, that will continuously monitor traffic between 7:00 in the morning and 9:00 in the morning, and then from 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon until 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon.
Did you physically do that?
We did do that for this study. Um, and we actually started an hour earlier at 3:00 PM, just because sometimes construction-related activity, they want to be out of the plant before it closes for the day, so we did elect to start early. Our, our traffic counts were conducted along Route 33 in, originally in August of 2016. We collected data along Cranberry Road in 2017, and we identified the peak hour. And what I mean by that is, that's the 60 minutes when traffic is busiest. And the way we collect our data with the machines or with the people is every 15 minutes, we write down the volume of traffic, and we start our count over again. And we continuously do that throughout the morning and afternoon periods. And what we do is we look at every 15-minute period to figure out, when was it the busiest? That determines the peak hour. Based on our counts, we found that to occur in the morning from 7:30 to 8:30, and in the afternoon, it was from 5:00 to 6:00. Now, peak hours are important to traffic engineers because that's usually when the road is busiest, and it's when drivers, all of us, experience more delays. If we drove at noon, there would be a lot less traffic. If we drove at 9:00 o'clock at night, there would be a lot less traffic. And we want to evaluate those periods when traffic is busiest because we want to understand the impacts of a use and whether we need improvements, roadway widening, traffic signals, things to improve the road capacity, particularly given a land use application. So expecting, um, before I get into the projection of the site traffic, traffic engineers also perform what's known as a level of service analysis. It's a very fancy way of saying, what does that tell us as drivers of those peak hour conditions? Can we get through the signal quickly, or can we get through the stop sign with a pause? Or am I sitting there for an extended time, and there's a backup of traffic behind me with delays? And so, a little scale was developed by traffic engineers called level of service. A represents the best level of service, kind of like a report card. And, excuse me, at that level of service, as drivers, our delays are short, five seconds or less. Look left, look right, we're on our way. At the opposite end of the scale is level of service F, and that's a condition defined by a delay, a wait of more than 50 seconds. And I assure you, as drivers, waiting for close to a minute seems like an eternity, and frustration starts to build and things can become congested. In the immediate vicinity of the site, we performed this level of service analysis at Yellow Brook and Cranberry Road. And in our report, we appended several figures, little stick figures in the back of the report, that show these grades, these levels of service, under existing conditions. And at Yellow Brook Road and Cranberry Road, we have, we have great levels of service, As and Bs. And part of the reason is, the traffic at that location, even peak hour traffic, I would characterize as light. In the morning, there are maybe 100 cars on Yellow Brook Road, cars and trucks, I should say vehicles. In the afternoon, it's a little higher, maybe 175.
And that's during the peak hour, correct?
All of those are peak hour volumes.
What is the, the level? What is the level average there at Cranberry and Yellowbrook?
There's no such thing as an average. What we do is we look at the-
Okay, what's the worst and what's the best?
The best is A, and the worst is B, coming out of Cranberry, turning left or right onto Yellowbrook.
And that's both peak and-
No. This is what I'm trying to explain. In the morning, everything is A. In the afternoon or evening peak hour, because there's more traffic on Yellowbrook, delays on Cranberry are a little longer, and that's a level of service B. As we get to, we'll say, the end of Yellowbrook Road at Route 33, we know we have problems there. We observe queuing, or fancy way of saying stacking, and drivers were waiting a long time to turn left or right onto Route 33. And those conditions were at level of service F.
F?
F, as in-
Frank?
Frank Foxtrot.
Okay.
That's indicative of, and because there's not a traffic signal there, it's simply a stop sign, vehicles from Yellowbrook that are trying to turn onto Route 33 wait a long time. And the reason is, the traffic on Route 33 in the morning is about 2,000 vehicles in one hour. At night, it goes up to about 2,200. So it's 10 times more traffic on Route 33 than on Yellowbrook Road. And that's why, near the site of Yellowbrook, traffic conditions are great because there's very light traffic. Route 33, a little different situation. And I'll explain what that means in the context of this application as I go through sort of the next sequence of our projections.
At Yellowbrook and Route 33, okay, you've got an F at both AM and PM?
Correct.
Okay, what is it in between?
We didn't study that.
You didn't study it at noon time?
No.
Okay.
And there's a reason for that. As traffic engineers, we want to study the system when it's at its worst. We put machines out on Route 33. We, I have that traffic.
You do have that.
I may have actually, I want to double check. We actually did do traffic counts, and this was for the traffic signal warrant analysis. We did conduct counts in, about a year ago, almost a year ago to the date, in 2017, what I call the midday hours, the 10:00 through 3:00 in the afternoon. So the data has been submitted to the board, and it's included, but because it's less than the peak hour, it, conditions are better. I can't tell you that they're not still F, but there's a very compelling reason why we collected that midday off-peak data, and maybe I'll just get to that now. One of the questions that arose throughout some of the technical review, both by the county, as well as your staff, is we know we have this problem at Route 33 and Yellowbrook Road. We can see it under existing conditions before we put any more traffic on Yellowbrook, whether from this site or any other site. So the question arose, can we get a light? Can we get a traffic light at Yellowbrook Road and Route 33? And it's a state highway, and so DOT has not only oversight, but they have a prescribed set of standards to determine whether a signal, a traffic light, is needed or not. And it's called a warrant analysis. And it involves not only looking at peak hours, because candidly, we could probably put a light in at almost every intersection in the state for rush hour, but that's not a very practical way to design highways and roads to accommodate traffic for one or two hours of the day. So DOT follows the federal procedure in terms of determining whether there's sufficient sustained volume to justify a traffic signal. And so as part of this application, we performed the second signal warrant analysis. And we looked at off-peak hours, we looked at peak hours. And we found that the signal is warranted today. In other words, the study that we performed could be used by the municipality, and the reason it has to be the municipality is that, I say you collectively, Howell Township owns the street. And so you or your engineering consultants would need to take a document that looks at traffic warrants, that looks at accident data, and submits it to DOT for DOT to opine whether there is justification for the signal. And so what we've done as part of this process is determine that absolutely it is a candidate for a traffic signal irrespective of this application. It's an existing condition. But the data's there, and the technical analysis that our office prepared on behalf of this applicant would facilitate that process. So, Mr. Chairman, and to answer your question, I sort of cut to the chase, we all know that a signal is needed. And for that reason, we study the peaks, it just tells us, if we don't put in a signal, it's still going to be bad. But we now have, I'll say, a little more to our argument collectively to approach DOT to say, let's talk about a signal. And we can discuss how that process evolves through this application. But what we did is, we then estimated the number of trucks and the amount of traffic that would come in and out at peak hours. We obviously put it into our traffic study to evaluate the what-ifs. And, no surprise, at Yellowbrook and Route 33, it'll be a problem. It'll have more traffic, but it'll still continue to be that problem.
Right. Now-
At the site driveway, though, and this is an important aspect, we can have levels of service A and B coming in with no lights or improvements. Cranberry Road stays the way it is, Yellowbrook Road stays the way it is. We basically align the driveway opposite Cranberry Road, and that projected operation will be at very high service levels.
Now, whenever, what was your peak at trucks entering your site? What is your peak?
We assumed-
And this also includes employees coming in to work?
There were several components to the estimates of future traffic. And just to draw proper attention in the record, I'm going to refer to figures five and six appended to our report.
Which report is that?
Sorry, thank you. Is the April 23, 2018 report. Do we want to identify that, Michael? Just for-
We haven't been-
Is that marking on?
It's part of the, yeah, it's part of the application. We haven't been marking them separately.
Okay.
So we included traffic projections, again, for the recycling component and for the bituminous concrete. And in the morning, we estimated six vehicles, trucks, for the recycling facility, and 12 trucks for asphalt, bituminous concrete production.
Okay, and what about employees?
Employees would be there before the peak hour.
Okay.
Because they have to obviously get the equipment up and operating, and so that's a little bit different than the trucks coming in and out.
Okay, now, my next question is, is what about trucks leaving to go to job sites?
Correct. We assumed that trucks would come in, and if they're not the same trucks, there would be other trucks in the facility who are receiving material, who would leave within that 60-minute period.
No, I'm not speaking of that. L&amp;L paving does other work other than just asphalt and recycling. What about the trucks and crews leaving to go to job sites?
My apologies. If I understand correctly, those paving operations are already there today, and they-
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
What I'm asking is, how many trips during peak hour is total coming into and off of the site? I don't care if it's employees, trucks going to the job sites, asphalt trucks, recycling trucks. What is that total number during peak?
To answer that question, I will, and again, refer you to figures nine and 10 of our report that show the volume of traffic from each component. So I'll answer your question, saying it's 18 vehicles entering in the morning peak hour, and 38 vehicles exiting.
Okay.
In the evening, there would be 10 entering vehicles, and exiting would be, if my math is correct, I believe it's 70 exiting vehicles.
Okay, that includes employees and everything?
Everything.
Okay. And that's during-
Correct.
From the time 5:00 to 6:00, correct?
Mr. Chair, can I just ask, you keep referring to your report. What, which report are you referring to? Because I'm looking at figure nine, and I'm not, that's the one before, and I'm not able to get to any of those numbers that you just described.
Sure. April 23, 2018.
So is that the report that is also updated March 2, 2017?
No, no.
Initially March 2, then updated April 23?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm on figure nine, as is up on the screen, and I can't get to the numbers you just described at all.
Okay. So we take each component, recycling, paving, and bituminous, and figure nine is morning peak hour. I add six entering with 12 entering, six entering from recycling, 12 entering for bituminous concrete, that's 18. For exiting, I have six recycling, 20 paving, and 12 bituminous concrete. That's 38. Figure 10 is the exact same math.
Well, the figure 10 is evening, correct?
Correct. But my answers were derived by adding up the entering volume for each individual site component.
You answered my question. That's what I asked. Okay, and then throughout the day, there's trucks entering and leaving?
Correct.
But these, this is the heaviest time that trucks will be coming in and out?
It represents the confluence of the busiest time of the road with busy site traffic. In other words, employees are leaving for the day or arriving in the morning. So the confluence of those two events represents peak and peak combined. And that's why, as traffic engineers, we study those conditions. At, again, 1:00 in the afternoon, when I know that there's less traffic on the roads, the impacts are less, meaning there's, I sometimes use a pipe analogy, right? A pipe can carry a finite amount of capacity. And at peak hours, for example, at Yellowbrook and 33, a pipe is full. Middle of the day, half-full. So I have freeboard. I know I have extra room in the pipe. That's why I don't necessarily study that time. But in this instance, and again, through this process, we have refined our projections, we've done, I would say, significantly more than the typical traffic impact study principally to ascertain the viability of a traffic signal at Route 33 in Yellowbrook. And just, we did, the next question is oftentimes, sure, there's traffic there today, but how much of it comes from L&amp;L? 0.5 percent. That's how much is site traffic. 99.5 percent of the traffic is highway traffic and everybody else. So it's a de minimis impact associated with this application. Moreover, the traffic associated with this application is far below the volumes we would expect with a conforming or permitted use in the SED zone. So we're well within what the zone plan otherwise expects to be on this site, both in terms of volume and in terms of character of traffic with heavy trucks.
Okay, what about Yellowbrook Road and 524?
We looked at that because the county asked us for that as well. We included the traffic, and I did neglect to mention, there was a mixed-use development, the name escapes me, I want to say it's Elon there.
Elon.
We did obtain a copy of that traffic report, so all of their numbers were included into what we call the background traffic. And we did look, because the county had asked, and we would not require a traffic signal at 524.
Yeah, but what is the peak level, both morning and afternoon?
At the intersection itself?
Yes.
I don't recall offhand. We did submit that to the county, and we may have submitted it to your professionals, I don't quite recall.
Yeah, I don't have the report in front of me, so.
We submitted it to them as part of their review on behalf of the county, wearing sort of a different hat.
You don't have that information?
I can, I can look, yes. Mr. Chairman, if we could come back to that as I-
Okay.
-continue to fumble through my file, I'll do my best to answer other questions while I look for it.
Okay. Jack, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
Any other board members have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
This is-
Use your mic, John.
Okay. Am I on?
Yes.
In all these traffic analyses at intersections, you mentioned the level. It seems like you never bring in the traffic fatalities or accidents, which I think are a major contributor to why you would want to put in a light.
We did study the accidents because that is a requirement for DOT, and it is used in the, I'll say, assessment of justifying a traffic signal. In other words, DOT will say, sometimes, there's not enough traffic hour by hour.
Right.
But for whatever reason, there's an unusually configured intersection, a blind curve, there's an accident history. And these warrants are, I'll call them standards, you know, standard one is traffic volume, standard two is maybe you have a lot of pedestrians crossing, standard three is maybe it's near a school, standard four is whether there are a lot of accidents. And so that was included in our findings to DOT. In this instance, it's icing on the cake. In other words, we satisfy the minimum volume warrant. The accident history, I don't recall it being overly acute, and one of the, I'll say, parameters of these studies is that there have to be five annual accidents a year on average for three years that could be fixed by a light. So it's not a deer running out, or it's not somebody wasn't paying attention at the stop sign and rear-ended the guy in front of them. They are traditionally what we call T-bone or angled accidents that a traffic signal installation would, in theory, eliminate. So yes, that was part of our consideration. We did submit the request to the Township Police Department and obtain that accident data.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Gary, and while you're looking for-
Okay, Gary, while you're, while you're looking for that report, you had mentioned that the existing level of traffic at Yellowbrook and Route 33 currently warrants a, a traffic signal, in your opinion.
That, that is correct, and, and again, following the standards that, that DOT requires us to use, yes, it, it would satisfy the, the warrants.
Okay. What, what would be the next step for getting a traffic light out onto, at, at that intersection?
In, in the world of DOT, as I think I said, whoever owns the, the intersecting road to a state highway, or if it's a commercial driveway, that agency needs to apply to DOT. So, if it's the intersection of a county road and a state highway, the county is the applicant. If it's a shopping center, the developer or owner petitions. In the case of Yellowbrook, as a municipal street, the Township of Howell Governing Body Committee would be the official applicant. And, and it's, it's basically a request to DOT, it's a form and a fee, and a study such identical to, to what's already been prepared. And it basically just gets submitted to DOT, and their traffic engineering people review the accident data, they review the traffic counts, they ensure that we followed all the proper procedures, and basically, they give a thumbs up, thumbs down, and then the next step in the process is to survey the intersection and design it, figure out where the wires go and the poles and, and that sort of thing. So, the whole process is administered strictly through NJDOT, and formally, the township would be the applicant. Now, Mr. Chairman, I am sorry, I have, I have dug through just about everything, and I, and I know for a fact, because the county had asked, but I think in trying to keep this file reasonable, I, I just did not bring that particular document.
Okay. Could you just address that at a later date, please?
Yeah, and, and on Monday's...
I'd appreciate that.
Yes, on Monday's hearing, we can come back, Monday, the 29th, we can come back and, and have that, that report on that, that intersection.
Thank you. Mr. Moretti.
Now, with the increase of the traffic coming out of the new, the new plant, that will make that light even more warranted?
It doesn't work that way. It's, it's binary. It either is warranted or it isn't warranted. Clearly, anything developed on this site would add traffic to it. But the, the measure that we found through this study is it's needed today, and obviously, this applicant will add, will contribute more traffic to it. Yes.
And now, at 527, you're, you didn't suggest that a light is needed there?
Correct. And, and, and that was twofold. One, the, the operating conditions were much better. You know, we didn't have the same volume that we do on Route 33, so the levels of service were higher, but also, there, there wasn't the same hourly sustained high-traffic volume that are, are the parameters that are used to, we'll say, warrant or justify the signal.
My understanding, though, of that, with the new plant going in, most of the traffic is going to go in that direction?
Not necessarily. And, and, and part of that not necessarily is, we'll say, for discussion purposes, if a signal were to go on Route 33, that provides more regional access, and it will be, we'll say, easier to get out onto the highway as a regional highway than a county road. So, in our study, we, we did initially assume that more traffic would go south, only because it is easier.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, between apps and drivers knowing the area, they know that they can wait a couple of minutes at 33, or they can turn right and go out to 524 and be on their way better.
Yeah, 524, I said 527, I'm sorry, 524.
So, so, once a light becomes part of the narrative, it, it will tend to affect that ultimate northeast-southwest direction. So, I'll defer to Mr. Butler as to what that means in terms of this applicant, but...
And, and just, just to go back, we were just talking before, that there were a couple of questions, that the DOT would be the ultimate decision-maker on whether there is a light that goes into that, into that intersection or not, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the DOT would design it and, and come up with their, their specs and bid it out, and the project would be, be built. Ultimately, who, who pays for that light to be installed?
Every case is different, and, and there is no right or wrong answer to that. Sometimes the state will pay for it, sometimes the municipality will, maybe in the course of reviewing land development applications, some municipalities have an ordinance where they will collect a fee from developers based on their share of impact. Other times, the need arises because of one particular project, and that becomes a different mechanism to fund the signal. So, it's always a different situation.
Okay. And what, from what you told me before, the need doesn't arise because of the, because of the proposed use, the need is there currently.
It's there currently, correct.
Okay. Have you ever had any discussions with the representatives of LNL regarding whether they would be prepared to pay a, provide a share of the cost for the, the building of that light?
I, I, I will say, in doing this for 30-plus years, virtually every applicant is a no-moss kind of thing. It's like, listen, we didn't create the problem, we, we, we can't pay, I mean, it's, it's already there. I, I will say, this applicant, it, it has been absolutely forthright and acknowledged their responsibility for increasing traffic, and has said, as the formulas dictate, we will contribute gladly and readily, and it helps our business, we know it helps everybody else's business on Cranberry and Yellowbrook, but we will certainly do our share. No question, no shirking of that responsibility.
Okay. And, and if I could just maybe conclude, conclude it with another question. Your testimony was that presently, what's going into that intersection from Yellowbrook Road, if I was correct, was 0.5% of the traffic?
Not presently. If, if we aggregated all of the numbers that I've, that are shown on figures nine and 10, if we looked at the site traffic that could go to the north on Yellowbrook Road, as a percentage of the traffic at Yellowbrook and Route 33, it's 0.05%.
Now, that's Yellowbrook, or that's combined, Yellowbrook and 33?
It's combined. It's the intersection volume, correct.
Okay.
Okay. And with the, if you know this, with, with the proposed use going into, in fact, what would that, what, what, would the percentage change?
No, that, that's with the, the site traffic.
Okay, so that's with the proposed site traffic?
Correct.
Okay, so that was 0.05%? I'm sorry.
Put it this way, it's still a level F.
It's a half a percent.
It doesn't matter.
Forget the decimal, it's a half a percent, right?
All right.
And yes, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's a level of service F that, as nominal as it is, site traffic would contribute to that.
I think on the best day, any level there, the best level might be a C, at best.
I wouldn't even speculate. Well, one thing that we didn't have in, in terms of studying is that this site has a history of use. I think it was Kerr Concrete or some type of manufacturing facility was on this site at some point, and it was part of background traffic. Now, obviously, the plant had closed, and when we did our counts, I, I couldn't identify that traffic. Arguably, in all of the numbers I've shared with you tonight, figures nine and 10, that may not be anything different than, than historically was on the site.
Let me ask you a question then, by you bringing that up. Whenever you did your counts, LNL had already started operating out of the site, correct?
Yes and no. When we first started our work with LNL, they hadn't received the, I'll say, approvals to occupy the buildings that were on the site. But we've been retained since, for almost two and a half years. Throughout the course of, I'll say, this application, they have occupied, and we have counted their traffic, and it is in our study. You, you will see those numbers.
In April of 2018, that amended March report, that included a, LNL's equivalent?
Correct.
So, they're technically already included in those counts?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, so the, the real net traffic impact is even smaller.
Any other questions for the board?
Yeah, I have one. You said earlier in your testimony that an office building would take up more traffic because of the amount of spaces, so we would anticipate seeing more traffic on Yellowbrook Road if this was an office building, right?
The, the zone permits an office as a, as a byright use, and given the size of the property, and, and again, a quick calculation, about a half a million square feet of office could be developed with 2,000 parking spaces. So, yes. In, in those peak hours that we've studied, instead of seeing, you know, 70 cars, it could be 1,000 cars. It's that kind of difference...
Okay.
...that the zone, I'll say, anticipates.
But in your report, I understand the peak times, but does the report include the future of the site, using it as nighttime hours?
No. We, again, study peak hours for the pipe analogy I described above. I want to know when the system is most taxed, how does this site operate? At nighttime, when I'll say there's, and I, I say this euphemistically, when there's no traffic on Yellowbrook Road, the pipe has a trickle in it. I, I'm not too concerned about levels of service and capacity at that time, because it's not a peak-loading condition.
Okay.
So, yes, I acknowledge there would be off-peak use of the site.
Okay. My last question is, when you do a study for a site like a paving company, would you ever take in consideration another similar operation, but going to another location to see what kind of traffic would be generated?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, we have done that.
Okay, but not in this report?
Um, you know, at some point, and, and again, I apologize because it's, it's continued for quite some time, I am fairly certain we looked at Stavola's operation at some point, and I'm clearly coming back next week, so that'll be item two to...
Yeah, if you could, because as somebody, I'm not familiar with the paving operation like some, maybe other people here, but it would just help, so I can kind of see what it would be similar to another operation of this nature.
We, we have been involved in a number of other asphalt applications throughout the state, and, and I can pull together the data that we've compiled for that. Every site's a little bit different, again, because of the, the size and the anticipated production by the end user, so...
Yeah, I understand.
But, but I can share that data, certainly.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have it. Mr. Dean, you, you made in a, a statement about 2,000 cars or something like that. Do you have a, a, didn't you say something could generate during the day with the manu, an office building? Do you have any type of a sketch layout to verify what numbers you've quoted?
No. What I've done is I've looked at the, the size of the property, which is a million and a half square feet.
Okay.
There is no FAR, and I've estimated based on a standard parking ratio of four spaces per 1,000 square feet...
Okay.
...and the amount of impervious area associated with providing that parking, plus the building, would be under the 70% allowable FAR. These are...
So, you, so you, you, you've done it, you've done a, a computation, but you didn't employ any of our ordinances that would provide buffers, land you couldn't use, things along those lines, wetlands or anything like that?
In, in, in an application such as this, we, we always want to compare the proposal with what the ordinance anticipates. The ordinance doesn't take into consideration environmental constraints or all of those...
Oh, but it does.
It does.
And, and that's what I'm saying, you, you make a claim...
Whether it's intended or not.
You make a claim and you want to throw numbers at the, at the board, but there's no substantiation for that. And I'm not asking you to design it, but a, a, a sketch of what could be done to show where, where it would be, number of parking spaces, allowed square footage, is important. You know, you start putting buffers and everything else in there, and wetlands, it considerably reduces the amount of property, which could reduce the traffic counts that you're talking about.
Even if my projections were halved, and, and I've assumed that a third of the site would remain green, that's a good rule of thumb for buffering, that, that's how I develop that million square feet of developable area, if I can finish. If, if I did a three-story office building, that footprint's going to get smaller, the buffers will get bigger, and I did rely on the ordinance for comparison, but even if I cut it in half, instead of 2,000 vehicles, it were only 1,000, it's still not 70. And, and that's the real litmus test with this site, is are we at variance with what the zone plan anticipates? And I can conclusively say, from a traffic perspective, no.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm like the, they say, I'm from Missouri, I want to see it. You, you can throw numbers at me, and as I told Mr. Kennedy when he gave me the drainage report, you know, liar's figure, figures lie. I want to see what it is and see how you sketch it out. I'm not asking you to design it, but I think if you're going to throw numbers at this board, you've got to have some verification of, of your statement.
I, I'm, I'm really not at liberty to design a site. I'm, I'm preparing, if I can finish, please. I am preparing a zoning comparison based on what is permitted in the zone.
But you're not, and I think that's what Jack's saying, and, and I'm going to finish now. So, what you're saying is, you're throwing out numbers based upon a site that we're assuming is rectangular and its X number of square feet. What Jack is trying to diplomatically say is that the town requires a 50-foot perimeter buffer. The town also has buffering on environmental resources. The town also has stormwater management requirements, circulation requirements, parking space requirements, lighting requirements. So, what Jack is saying, you provided this information to the board. We did not ask for it. You're using that as justification to say the traffic being generated by this proposed use, which has been determined to be not permitted, is less than what we could expect if it were a permitted use. That is your testimony provided to the board. What Jack is saying is, you're, you threw out 500,000-square-foot office building. He's saying, show it to me on a plan. That's what he's saying. So, now you're saying you're not at liberty to design it, but you're the one that provided the information to us to begin with.
And here's why I don't need to design it, because the site today is 81.7% impervious coverage.
But you see, now you're backpedaling. The bottom line is this, that has nothing to do with traffic. Wait, Mike, with all due respect, your expert provided this board testimony that said a permitted use would generate 2,000 trips in the AM peak and the PM peak, based on a 500,000-square-foot office building, which is permitted on the site. How much of the site is covered? That's a drainage issue. That has nothing to do with parking and the square footage of a permitted use. It also doesn't matter to this board whether the site is paved or not. The buffer is the buffer is the buffer.
Correct.
So, we have requirements in our ordinance. You provided this testimony to us, like I said.
And what, what...
So, what I'm saying is, between now and Monday, we want to see it. That's what we're saying.
And what I, what I think, what Mr. Dean said was that he, he gave you his assumptions.
Okay, so...
And he, and he said, he said that he, he looked at your ordinance, and he assumed one-third of that, of the, of that property would be green, and he came up with a number.
I, I heard it.
And he said, and then he said, in, in response to Mr. Mallon, okay, you don't like my assumptions, we'll even cut it in half, so it's a 250-square-foot building.
I understand.
So...
But what I'm saying is...
Even, even under those scenarios...
You provided the testimony. You're trying to justify your traffic by comparing it to something that you're not providing us. What the two of us are trying to say is, we want to see it.
Provide it.
Correct.
A sketch. Just sit down and draw out a sketch, that's it.
Correct.
And, and the easiest way for me to do that, Mr. Chairman, is literally to take the site plan that you have before you.
Do that.
Everything that's asphalt, I will then assume an alternate use with the exact same buffer...
That's it.
No. No, that's not it.
You got different...
A permitted use doesn't just get to ignore the buffer because there's pavement.
He's not saying that.
I'm not saying that.
Well, he's saying, everything that's paved, he's going to assume, that's what he just said, Mike.
The plan, not site plan. I will respect every buffer that is shown on the plan that is this... is this application.
I don't think that this request should be this difficult. And so, what I'm getting at here is that we're asking for information so that we can provide the board our professional opinion on whether or not, at the end of this day, you've met your burden under the law. And today, we don't have enough information, whether it's a noise report or this sketch. And so, I don't think we should be having to fight you over getting a sketch to justify testimony you provided. And I do think that we're having to argue over it, because Jack asked for it, you kept saying no. I asked for it, you kept saying no. The chairman asked for it, so we want to see it by next Monday.
Just take the site plan and do your sketch. That's all we need. Any further questions from the board? This witness.
Yeah, and the other issue is, we're now within, you know, our hearing is one week from today, which is within a 10-day timeframe. So, anything that we submit, you have to understand that it's being submitted within that 10-day timeframe.
That's fine with this...
I need copies of those documents.
Yes, sir.
Of course.
Not on the day of the hearing.
No, sir. Is that a problem?
Not a problem.
Just get us all copies, please.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions? No. Jack, Jim, you done?
Yep.
Okay.
With the caveat that we're not going to argue over it. Correct. Yeah, Mr. Dean wanted me to remind the board that this site, whatever is going to be prepared is for illustrative purposes only. We're not fighting about, you know, interpretations of the ordinance. This is for illustrative purposes only.
Okay.
That's what we asked for.
That's it. And just to recap, we need the study at Yellowbrook and 524.
Correct.
And then, also, Mr. Martin had requested...
Three items on my to-do list.
Yes, sir.
The information from other sites, the site plan, and the information from 527.
Yes, sir.
524, I apologize.
524.
Thank you.
And also, I want to thank your Aztec witness, you know, very informative, and thank you for coming back.
We bribe her with bakeries.
Good old New Jersey Bakery, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If they're going to prepare this information, if we could get it by Friday, gives us a chance to look at it, so we come partially prepared for the meeting Monday night?
Okay.
Please?
We'll endeavor to do the best that we can.
Okay. Okay. No further...
No further tonight.
Okay, now, the case of L&amp;L Paving, case number BA18-06, L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc., will be carried to Monday, 29, 28, 29. 29, with no further notice, 7:30. It is a special meeting.
Correct.
So, okay, is there any further business at the board? Jim, Jack, Ron? Okay, seeing none. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Amata?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Zoning board adjustments adjourned at 10:18.